To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Have a good weekend. All those present survived it. Good deal. Call the meeting to order and look for a motion to approve agenda as printed. No additions or corrections.
No.
So move. Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the agenda. Minutes from the six twenty-nine meeting.
I read through them and they look good to me, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Minutes approved. Uh, any general public concerns? You have any general public concerns, Ken?
No.
Okay. Alright, seeing none, we will move on to Dan, Dean, and Kerry.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For those that you that haven't met Kerry, this is Kerry McCarthy. He is the person that the EMA Commission appointed to uh the coordinator position for Humboldt County. Kerry comes to us from uh Cassuth County and Algonah specifically. And I'll Kerry, I'll let I'll let you take it from there. Do I finish the introduction? Maybe give you some background information on uh on your appointment and stuff like that?
Well, Dan said he came from Algonah. Prior to that, I was actually in South Carolina for a while. Been a paramedic EMS for over thirty-nine years. I've been involved in emergency management as a volunteer for about six, seven years prior to that. Both in Rice County, Minnesota, and Cassuth with Dave Penn. He's one that really got me going to this, got me into the classes and you know, things like that. So grateful for him, but I love it. I love the job and I've actually uh semi-retired as a paramedic, so I'm not doing that as much anymore. And I go out my time down here full-time uh to be emergency manager. When I got here, two months ago, three, four months ago, uh walked in and we had some some issues that we need to take care of and we're very active in solving those issues and getting things going. One of them is our emergency operations center. And we've been working on that. There's some things that really needed to be brought up to to stuff, as I like to say, get it going to where it needs to be. Uh, and a lot of it is communication aspect of it. Getting a radio in there, getting computers in there so that if there is an incident, we can open it up and open it up in a timely fashion. Uh, right now, uh, we're still not up to where I would like to see it. We have ordered radios for it and their next step and there's gonna be also computers. So if something does happen, we can have a dispatch center in the ELC. That center was built to withstand an S-five tornado, so it's probably gonna be safer places around to be in. So it should withstand pretty much anything that nature can throw at it. Um, so we're getting on that hopefully here within a couple of months, we will be up to where we we need to be. Uh, the other thing that we had to work on maybe is our instant command trailer. We have a beautiful instant command trailer, however, with changing the radios over to the seven hundred megahertz. We had to get radios for that. And the radios that we got were approved by the EMA Council and they were ordered. So hopefully they'll bring up stuff and actually what I'll do is like the ELC, get the computer guys in there and get it set up to where if we have to, if the ELC goes down or the dispatch goes down, we still have another way to dispatch and take calls and everything. So that's in the works also. Hopefully sometime this week, computer guys will be out there and we'll just kind of run a testament of what we're gonna need to to bring it up to where it needs to be. Uh, a lot of.
I got a question. Where's the funding coming for all this?
The budget that we submitted earlier this year.
What is the management budget?
Yeah, and then uh whatever our balance was uh left over rolled over into the new budget. Um, so yeah.
Be covered by the mayor's salary?
My big salary. Yeah.
You're saying these houses collateral?
Yeah.
You just commission off a selling houses.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah.
I didn't know if there's grant money that you were looking at or?
At least then admit it, but uh because that you have not had an EMA for the last eight, ten months.
September of nineteen, I think was the last time you had.
There's some money there also. Um, the thing that I I I'm very conscious about money, as those two could tell you. Um, we haven't had to pay any EMA director for a while, so we have that extra money in the bank. But this is something that we really need to have, so we will figure out where to get the money somewhere. As far as grants go, uh, and I don't wanna sound like a Debbie Downer or anything, but when I got to work, the computer that was there would not allow me to open up any emails or anything like that. Because of that, unfortunately, sometimes strange issues were not met and I lost out on a huge opportunity for grants. Uh, next year, we'll be right back in the mix of the things, but this year's gonna be a little difficult. Uh, my partner up in Algonah, her name is Cindy, uh, she just got done completing class on how to write grants. So she has agreed to help me. It's been ten years since I've written a grant, but she and I are gonna start writing some smaller grants and then I'm gonna send her on to writing bigger grants. So we can hopefully make up for some of this downfall that we're not getting with the MPG grant, uh, which brought in a good sum of money. So, um, one of the other things that I have to work on is figuring out how we're gonna get some grants to make up for that loss. So.
Okay.
But there's money out there. Uh, for example, Webster County, Dylan down there, he just bought a thirty-four thousand dollar drone. So, and he said, somebody's working on a a new ELC trailer. He owns it, probably about three hundred thousand, and he's working all on grants. He keeps saying, the money's out there, you just gotta go get it. So I'm gonna go get it. I'm gonna get us up to stuff and make sure that everything's working. Excuse me. Uh, one of the things that I that I'm in the process of doing also is our search team, the emergency response team, becoming active with that, get that going. Uh, and having them, they do way more than just going out and directing traffic or doing things like that. They help set up things. Uh, right now, I have one gentleman on there, his name is Nick. Uh, he's maintaining everything, starting everything up. You know, sometimes things aren't started up for months and doesn't do very good when it comes to inches. So he's the one that's starting things up, maintaining them, getting things organized. And we're actually having a open house two weeks from Saturday to try to recruit more people. So that's the search team, the grants. Um, I guess at the trailer, there was a camera that was on the trailer that would telescope up and you could look around. Uh, that thing is uh broken, so I called Jensen, just a trailer, right? Trailer, and asked about parts to fix it. They have it made that years. I said, okay, well, what if we need to replace it? Ten to twelve thousand dollars. I thought that's ridiculous. So I went and I purchased a drone with the board's approval, costing me under two thousand dollars and everything used at at the the trailer. Just set it up, take a look, see what we need to do and uh just gotta go from there. So when I said I'm kinda very conscious about money, spending, said spending twelve thousand, five, two, correct, eight, ten, well, we needed that ten somewhere else because we are very badly short in a lot of areas. If we had to respond to that right now, I don't know if we'd be able to do it with this much. It's kinda scary, so you know, I'm really trying to make anyways on that. Plus, some of the other things that we have to do, um, we have what we call ESF plans. Um, they have to be updated by the state. I have four of them that need to be done by August. Lots of meetings, lots of trainings. I still have trainings that I have to meet to complete things and it's it's all in there, so we're we're really working hard on that. But we're making good progress. I think we're doing pretty well. Maybe I'll see if they go.
Is this a thirty-two hour full-time or a forty-hour full-time?
We budgeted for forty hours a week. So that was one thing I have to mention, uh, no disrespect to any of the board members, but Dean and I have been the most engaged uh members over the last several years. I mean, we've worked with Carl, we've worked with Fravish, we've worked with few days, and now we're working with Eric. Um, I would say that, uh, you know, uh, based on past performances, uh, there was some questions, I think, referred to the other day about, you know, is is there enough with this position to warrant a full-time job? And I think Dean and I, you know, we we did check into it, you know, we had we had uh meetings with uh Thomas Creighton, he's the EMA director over in Hardin County, and he came from Hardin, from Franklin, so he had multiple counties uh as far as how they were operational. Um, I had Kerry mentioned Dylan Hagan from Webster County. Dylan was in the same position down there. He had previously come from Hamilton, so he knew how Hamilton operated and and Webster operated. And he had been, you know, partnered with Cassuth and Dave Penn, so he knew how Cassuth was uh was operational. Um, Dave had requested from his EMA Commission to bring Kerry on as his uh full-time coordinator, but uh the Cassuth County EMA, uh, they weren't ready for that position yet, so um with Kerry, uh, with Dave Penn knowing that our position was open, um, he suggested Kerry to apply down here. Um, you know, we looked at, we, I think someone had mentioned, we looked at sharing, we looked at, you know, whether or not this is a part-time position. Uh, Wright County, um, I think we, they had been part-time and then they hired a full-time person. Um, we 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 talked about that, um, but they were, uh, nothing against youth. Uh, I think it was maybe more of a inexperienced type of situation that that their coordinator had just moved into a full-time position for the entire county. Um, so we didn't really think that that was a good fit for us because it was, um, we didn't know how that person would be able to split their time between, you know, Wright County and and Humboldt County. And then, of course, about the time where we were getting our feet under us, then that's when the the COVID situation broke out. So, um, I I think you had mentioned that you're probably spending a couple of hours every day, so eight, ten hours a week on COVID-related uh uh information and carrying out different uh tasks related to that. So, um, if you were looking, you mentioned it was a thirty-two or thirty-six hour a week, you know, may maybe the EMA prior to COVID was that much, but now since, you know, it's uh Kerry got the additional days with the COVID part of it, uh, um, it it is a it is a forty-hour a week job. Um, and we looked at it, you know, what what did we resolve? I think the, I think, you know, a couple of points that we looked at with the, you know, the previous coordinator was, uh, you know, communication and and accountability. And I think, you know, uh, Kerry's been here for several months, so he's probably been through his probationary period, you know, and Dean and I have been, you know, quite honestly, we've been monitoring it pretty close because of what had taken place before. And uh, so we felt comfortable, uh, when we made a meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth with our full commission. That was the first time we'd had a full commission meeting because of the whole COVID situation and where everybody felt comfortable that they could come and participate. So we we discussed that at our meeting in on June twenty-fourth and, uh, you know, I I presented a document from a from a labor attorney that had represented us in previous uh previous uh times, uh, Stu Cochran from Fort Dodge. Uh, he 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 uh wrote a summary of Iowa Code, Chapter twenty-nine C, and uh and the authority that 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 commission has moving forward and stuff. He wrote it in layman's terms and so it was very easy to understand and follow. So, um, while we discussed, uh, you know, maybe the traditional avenue of of advertising, taking applications and uh and then and then sorting through those applications, um, it it, the COVID allows us to operate a little bit differently. I mean, it's an appointed position and so it was set up by Homeland Security after uh two thousand and one nine one nine-one-one incident and stuff. So we got a little autonomy that we can we can operate on our own, make our own decisions and things like that. So, um, you know, we had a very thorough, lengthy discussion on the twenty-fourth. Eric was part of that and I think, you know, uh, we had nine board members and and everyone participated and asked very same questions that you guys had about, you know, um, full-time status, what's, you know, what's what's this position moving forward? And then by the end of the discussion, you know, everyone felt comfortable enough that uh that it was a full-time job based on, you know, what resources that we had provided and then uh then that's when they decided to uh make a motion to offer Kerry full-time status and then that was second and then unanimously passed. So, um, that's that's where we're at today. I mean, I I, you know, I don't think I could have supported it if if, you know, Kerry wasn't, hadn't proven itself in the first three months of the job, if we had any questions, uh, so I I think, I don't think we would have supported hiring Kerry if we didn't feel he was, you know, competent and, you know, proven himself to date. So that's kind of, that's where we ended up at, so.
I can just speak as a board member, because I'm just a board member on the EMA Board right now. So everything, I concur with what Dan said. Uh, since Kerry's been, um, you know, the interim director to this point, he's sent out monthly updates to all board members and spelling out, you know, some of the things that he's been doing. Uh, the board, you know, like Dan said, Matt, a really good meeting, actually, uh, asked good questions. Uh, I think the transparency is there, and I think you're the one that actually mentioned transparency, Kerry did. Uh, communication is is just so much improved. Uh, and the board members, I think, got that just DMF, you know, from the board member there at the meeting. Like I said, I just wanted to mention that he does send out, I don't know what, I I don't wanna say monthly, but I'd say for sure, probably give or take.
I've done three of them so far.
Yeah, so, I mean, just.
Well, because the meeting dates are still spread out.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I wanna make sure you know what I'm doing.
And I just wanted to mention that because in the past, the communication all around was just so lacking. Then I just wanna give him a thumbs up for sending that. Uh, you know, the fact that, you know, and the board members get that, everybody's got the mail and they see it and know how to get ahold of him if there's any questions. So the House of Board has been quite a bit more active in, you know, keeping uh keeping track of their duties as being on that board. So that's been possible.
Yeah. But Dave, I mean, you've got certain team background and and different things like that. I mean, I think you met with Kerry on a couple of occasions and stuff, so I mean, do you have anything to add? And that you, that your paperless impressions and or anything like that, Dave, or?
I think he's on the right track, is what's causing with it. Um, have you got an email set up yet?
Mm-hmm.
It's about once a week. I'm still getting messages from Homeland Security and.
There's nothing I can do about that.
Well, I I use them either if they're nasty, but are you getting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, well, I'm. I should say yes. As far as I know, I I know there's, uh, the predecessor was involved in a lot of different non-EMA things. I've got your emails on and I'm trying to stop them and sometimes it takes two or three times.
They come like right from Homeland Security?
I've gotten those, yes. And I get I get a lot of updates from the state. I get at least one or two updates from the state. If it's not COVID, it's it's something else. And as far as COVID, if you don't mind me digressing here, um, people seem to think that that's on the decline and it's actually the opposite. And it's gonna be very interesting here in the next two weeks to see if they if they spike. It's got a strange feeling that they're gonna spike. Everyone's together for the Fourth of July. I saw pictures of, uh, you know, different areas like beaches and stuff, like out east, out west. They're just bad. Just bad. So it hasn't gone away. There's probably just a big group, and I got a strange feeling that we're gonna hit another big time crisis here for the next couple of weeks. Now, the state has asked us and pretty much almost required us to store a thirty-day PPE supply. Uh, the reason for that is if something does hit again, they're not gonna be able to wait. So we give them thirty days to stock up on what they would need for it. So right now, we have two-thirds of our thirty-day PPE supply. That was figured out by looking out, I had to make the request for PV for the county. So looking back the last three months, what our average was useless. And so I might have flushed a little bit, a little bit overboard, just in case, but, um, we have more for that. And I believe they're gonna be starting it over at the.
The old fire station.
I think, so they have to be climate controlled. So I picked up two of the three shipments. Uh, we're not sure when the third shipment was coming in, but we should be good thirty, forty-five days. So if we do have a big outbreak again and people get serious about protection and things like that, we'll be ready.
Yeah, speaking of the old fire station, I mean, um, we I we did move out of the Rutland shit. I don't know if you board members were aware of that or not. We're renting a steel pole building from Dick and Danielson on, uh, Second St. Street.
That's.
Fifth Street here in in Dakota City, so it's a real nice facility. It's a little more than what we were paying, but not uh not completely, uh, you know, full on our budget or anything like that. So it's a a lot, uh, it's a lot nicer building.
Closer.
Lot closer, Nick, and we had talked about that. I mean, yeah, it's great having it next door to the old fire station. So not in the event of a storm that came through there and heaven forbid it would take this city all over the LAC, uh, it would also take all of our equipment, so that's why we had it in a secondary location on site, so it.
You don't want all our eggs on one bag.
Yeah, we just wanted to make, you know, be cautious of that.
And we did have an issue too with helping Rutland that one, it's your floor, things are dirty. You always have to clean, make it look good, wanna make sure things aren't started and they did. Uh, another problem that we had is there were over a hundred cleanup kits out in Rutland over the winter time. And these cleanup kits, there's gallon of bleach, gallon of cleaner, Comet, stuff like that. Well, you know, outside, guess what?
Yeah.
We all rush it. So they all have to be taken apart, replaced, cleaned, and I need to get actual contact to them. Then they have kind of that poison control, because we've got bleach and other chemicals mixed in with that, which we won't bet up, so it's in the water. You know, so we wanna make sure on that. But we have a hundred some cleanup kits that we need to get cleaned. Um, I've talked to some uh some friends and Nick is our person right now, and we're gonna try to get the church members to volunteer to clean them up, uh, to replace the things. It's not gonna be too bad. Uh, I mean, you can get gallon of bleach for a buck and cleaner for a buck, a dollar store or things like that. So, you know, we'll we'll be able to do that, but then once they're clean, we can put them over in in the old fire stations.
Heat it.
Where it's climate, climate controlled. And this building, though, it's not technically climate controlled. It's better insulated, um, from the wind and the cold. So it, you know, but I don't wanna take that chance. You know, we got a real cold weather, I don't wanna go through that work just to lose again, do it again.
Yeah.
And we're gonna store our cots. We have three cots that are over at the hospital. Uh, they're storing them for us. Uh, so we like to bring them over to the fire hall too, so everything's in one place. So if something happens, we can just back it up, do it and take it right away. Sometimes we go over there and then over there and then over there. And if I may, um, one thing that I can't find anywhere is any type of agreement at one place. Places to shelter, places to eat, you know, things like that. Um, God forbid something happens here, you know, I'm sure this town will all come together and find places for these people. If it's not Direct Center or, um, at the BFW or anyplace like that, you know, some of these churches, I'm sure we'll all come together. But we really should have agreements in place. And I've come up with an agreement form and, you know, my project form, I don't know, my project this summer is to go around and get these agreements signed, so everything's legal, you know, you don't have to worry about litigation or anything like that if something happens. You gotta make sure that all the Ts are crossed and I D are dotted. So that's another thing that I will be doing in the summer is getting these agreements in place. And not just, not just Humboldt, but I mean, one or the other towns also, because not, everything may happen here. Something might happen in, for example, Bradgate. You know, it's a long way from Bradgate to here for people to get when they lost everything. So just uh just keep a cabin update with what's going on on that plate right now.
Okay. I I got a question for the commission. Um, is this a one-year contract or is it a three-year or is it yearly? You renew it with him or what have you set up?
To my knowledge, it's just a one-year contract. I mean, it just, I mean, he serves, I mean, the wording in that, uh, that twenty-nine C, I mean, he serves the pleasure of of the commission. So and it's an appointed position, so I'm not sure we specifically talk about length of service. Um, we probably need, we'll probably have an ongoing review because we we're gonna, the commission, we're gonna try to meet at least quarterly, if not every other month, uh, moving forward to keep everybody informed. So I think, uh, we'll obviously have an annual review, but, uh, so I guess the best answer is it's it's annually right now, so.
Okay.
And I just believe that we should be even more because this position requires the uh the commission's view, what their plan, what do they want me to do? Okay? I need direction from the EMA Council, from from all the officials saying, this is what we want you to do. I mean, I could go do it on my own, but you may like it, you may not like it. That's why I need that vision, your vision, to be told to me so I can follow this. Me, I'll need to be on the same book. If anything happens, I'll need to be on the same book. We can't just really do that.
You know what? And we have the, you know, our informational packet, which was fairly thick at the EMA meeting, the Stu Cochran's layman's explanation of the code as it relates to EMA directors. So if you ever can get a copy to everyone, very enlightening to read that. Basically, the director serves at the discretion of the board. And so if the board meets and says, he's not following, he or she isn't following anything, there is, they can get another director.
That's what I was wondering.
It's very, very well spelled out in the code as it's been written ever. Uh, so that's why, and and yes, the board meeting and the board paying attention, because I think that's one thing where the mayors were always the appointees, because yeah, it's whole county. I mean, you know, if it's a whole county, it can happen, you know, maybe it can happen, it doesn't, but. So that's, it's interesting and I, that was discussed at that meeting too, the regularity.
I remember right there.
Okay. The regularity of the meetings.
And then just as I wanted to, Dave commented that Kerry's on the right track. I I think we felt comfortable in that way too, Dave. I I think Kerry was probably the first to admit that, you know, he has a lot to learn, um, as far as the EMA position. Uh, but we felt that, you know, the way his communication skills and the initiative that he's shown already, um, were reason enough to, you know, we felt comfortable moving forward. I I don't know, what, do you have anything to add, Kerry?
No, I would agree with everything he said and I I appreciate him telling me when he's gonna be gone at meetings and if he's gonna be around or not and stuff. I I appreciate that because we didn't have that before.
And I talked to a lot of the other EMAs and I've asked them, so when do you finally get? And they say, every time they start a job as an EMA, three years before you're finally settled to where you need to be.
That brings up a question. You said that Cassuth County head of was thinking of doing a full-time. What if that opens up something that's not for a year?
Uh, they won't be able to, uh, because, excuse me, he wanted to hire me to oversee this company. That was the only reason that he was doing that. And now that they have somebody here, he won't need that, which you're getting a great opportunity for. They also started a new EMS director up there, Phil Alberts, and, um, he's been helping Dave with everything. But Dave has a lot of experience in the fire, he really does. Uh, he's a very active EMA. He responds to a lot of things. He, you know, very good. He's a very active EMA, he responds to a lot of things, he, you know, very good. So Phil's not able to help him out with some of those things. So, right now, at a good, even chill. So I don't believe that he would be that. Would I go back up there? I'm happy here. He has a house, so, okay.
There's a lot of houses in town. They have a realtor probably still.
I know, I have to. I mean, I'm really, really right.
Yeah.
So outraged.
So, my question is, is you have nothing, you're not an EN to you anymore?
No, I'm still.
Because when you first started, you were working every other week?
Mm-hmm.
So now you're here.
Correct. I've been in EMS thirty-nine years, thought it was time to somewhat retire. I still am on the roster up at Albona in case anything happens, they need somebody, you know, maybe like you said, if anything happens or, but I'm still on their roster up there. And I'm going to continue to do that to the best of my capabilities to keep my license up. But, the problem with working up there and working down there is I come down here, I work three days, I go up there and work three days, and I came back, it's like one step forward, two steps back. And, you know, I hate to say it on the weekends, a few odd days off on the weekends I was down here, but I was doing more like getting equipment, taking care of and stuff like that, where a lot of the administrative, I need to be here Monday to Friday, so I can factor in people. So that wasn't very successful at all. I mean, I did my job, I did everything I could, but the three and three just didn't work. I'm ready to retire from that business, I've been going out long enough. This is what I wanted to do.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to motion to approve the hire, under salary of forty-nine, one eighty-eight a year, forty dollars a week.
I'll second that motion.
First and a second, any further discussion?
I mean, to me, this is a strange setup. Always has been a strange setup.
It is, if you read that, it's.
That's what I was just reading in here, it's not a county employee, but.
But, yep, we're hiring you.
But, yeah, yeah.
The county has to approve it.
The thing is like benefits, and who covers the benefits then? Does the commission cover the benefits, the insurance, I mean, is there insurance? Is there holiday pay, tip pay?
Danny, you probably can answer that better than I can.
Yeah, I was going to say, the board's not officially approving a hire, they're approving him to be paid. The commission does the hiring, you can't stop the hiring. But there's no way to word that correctly on an agenda, so you're proving.
And he probably isn't going to work very long without getting paid.
But, yes, he does get insurance and it goes to the county and he does get sick leaves and everything, yeah.
To Ruth's point, I mean.
Gets paid out of EMA.
Nine-nine-one is like that, reservation board is like that, the testers office is like that, so there's certain positions, entities within the county that are, have separate, you know, authorities supervised determining those positions. I don't, I understand completely what you mean.
It is very curious, but that description from Stu and Layman starts to help, I think, all the board members, is what they set up needing. And you're mandated to have emergency management.
Yeah.
We are.
That's something that.
That is one thing that, yes, I mean, that is, in the definition of it, it says each county must have an EMA coordinator, so, I mean, that's, that's not mandated, it's not like, not like some other ones that.
Not an option.
So the last time we asked was just so that we got some updates as to what's going on around the county, which started the.
Yes.
And I guess that's all we are interested in, to know if Bradgate has flooding, if what's going on. So we're not the last to know.
Well, I'm kind of hoping that, you know, with help with down here, that if you want, we can put you on the list and you can get the updates and I don't know.
I.
You, yeah, yeah. Put you on our mailing list, that'd be great, you know.
And they're very short, and to my point, they're not live on all pages, but it's like, this happened, this is what we did, this happened, this is what we did.
Well, once every five years, we have to sit in that chair, so when you get around to that chair, it's nice to kind of know what has been going on, as opposed to, we're approving a hire.
Right.
I didn't even know we had talked to anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the crazy part about the whole situation. I mean, I don't know why we're even involved, other than the fact that she asked to write the checks.
And now you're buying and paying.
It's a thing.
It's all.
I can see you there, two weeks.
It's been nine, yeah.
Well, so, we have first, second discussion, anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Approved.
I'd like to have a copy of that letter of Cockrins.
Oh, sure.
No, I don't want it personally, but someone keep a copy of that, so next time, you know, we don't have to go fill, digging through paperwork.
Exactly. I bet Dan's got a copy, I bet Kerry's got a copy.
You can have that one right there.
Would you like to file that in?
There it is.
EMA file, if there's such a thing.
There is.
Okay.
That's right, we've got to get the old stuff out.
That's excellent. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Kerry.
You were run down the other day when you were sitting on the highway, were you, Kerry?
Over there, I was going to check area.
Yeah.
You were broken.
Well, I went by you, and by the time I come back, you were gone.
Yeah, we just had a computer installed into the truck, and without a few lights, sirens, stuff like that, and I'm driving through Clarion, and I'm hearing this thing, it's like, what's that, a radio? Turn on the radio. No, but it's really kind of muffled. I sit there for a few seconds as I go through Clarion, and it's like, that sounds like a horn for a police car, you know, there. So I'm looking around, I can't find a spot for it, but, oh no, I rolled out my window, sure enough, it's coming out of that. It broke. So I pulled off the side of the road, and I called the manufacturer, so I go, cut this, look up the backseat, cut this wire, cut it, turn on, eh, you know, so I'm trying to call him, and he's busy back in the jail, and what am I going to do? And I called the guy back, and he goes, okay, well, pull up the fuse in this line. So finally, it actually supposed to be tomorrow, it gets fixed, but I could figure it out, I could figure out where this noise is coming from, so.
Yeah, you're playing as a siren.
Well, I saw you, I went by you in the sim line, and by the time I got turned around and you were gone, so.
I wish it would stop. Don't let fire and spin truck like that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kerry. Well, we're a bit ahead of schedule, but can we move into the assignment of tax sales services?
Janice.
There's a person that knows all about it.
The county wants what's supposed to be coming in.
My little waist down.
Well, let's hold, put that on hold. Move to the accept resignation of the part-time courthouse custodian, and for clarification, will that be done?
Yes, I have a letter here from Bill Pootree, his last day of work will be July thirty-first.
Let's regret, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Bill, part-time custodian.
Sergeant.
Any further discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Would you like me to get an ad ready?
I am. We're going to have to fill out some.
Where are we, where, and Dave is when?
Is that this week?
Yeah, yeah, no.
I think it's this.
End of this month?
Oh, the ad is running into.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to make sure we have a custodian.
Yeah, we're running out of custodians. And the guy, they're both gone.
Yeah. Dave has some time to use up, and he's going to use that, so he won't be here at all in August.
That's what I wondered.
Have we had much people pulling apps that you know of?
I think I've seen two, maybe three.
Okay. And people could be getting off the website.
Yeah, and that could be too, yeah. I can show you the folder afterwards, and you can look at it.
Perfect. Well, we can hopefully get any reports.
Well, I have no meetings this week.
I didn't have any meeting, I came up Thursday, I was a little late, five-tenish, and they were already around the corner, down to the bar corner, they had quite a number from the high school.
Big thank you to the high school athletics, the boys, the girls, I mean, they all pitched in, and I think we've figured thirty-three minutes and the flags were down. We had approved. All the way, all the way.
Go out. Tonight, we're going to.
I was going to say, I was going to say.
I'd like to see them down in that quick too, hopefully tonight, I think it's going to rain, but I don't know, I think our showers are going to.
The Donald's light are going to get. I need to back up the trunk a little bit. I did a lot of meet with Brandon Myers at DNE four fifty-nine. He's moving in next week. It cleaned, the drainage ditch Webster four fifty-nine.
The joint district.
Joint district, yeah.
I did have several phone calls from disgruntled Fourth of July people that, one thought I was on the city council, that was upset about shooting fireworks and after the hours, and they said, we don't have any say in that, but I think the city council makes, do they make tonight?
Yeah.
So they might be giving a.
Earful.
Earful, because people aren't very happy about that yet.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
I didn't have anything official, but I think it was last Wednesday, July first, Eric and I went out to, what was it, Iowa Avenue, went and looked at that drainage.
We double-checked on, something we checked on.
The culverts, that.
That was washing the bank away.
Right, but now the culverts, the big, into the drainage dish is spreading farther than what they thought it was, so that's going to have to get pretty bad. And there's a lot of gaps, and we got some pictures to start with, and then we went out there and looked at it, because that, we've had shade.
It is what, it's just, it's a forty-two inch outlet into that ditch. They did get the bank repaired, it looks, I think it looks good.
It looks really good compared.
And, so then they moved on to thinking they were going to reset one joint, but when they, of course, started addressing that, or looking at it, now it goes back like four or five joints. Remember, this is all, I crawled in there and saw the biggest moth I'd ever seen in my life on top of that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I didn't disturb it, it might be some dangerous species, so.
It's certainly not the bad.
No, I didn't know it was just going out, or just keep going in, but anyway, it's separating upwards of six inches where those tiles, it's almost like they severed. It's kind of severed off, down, and.
I'm going to maintain distance.
Right, I, pardon me, it's, it needed the pictures, but we have Ryan Yaman, who has that repair worker, and he was adamant that we go out there, so we did. And it is, they're separate.
There's a good gap.
And, yeah, you can stick, you can see down in there.
You can see it's stuck down in there, maybe lose your ditch even more and then have more damage.
And it's also, just over time, that whole outlet, the outlet's gone down.
So you need to dig it out, block it.
Yep, and it's going to take rock to bring it back up, and so we'll be at a better level, we'll bring it literally further away from the ditch. So it should help everything that might.
Was he going to strap them then?
Yes, but some of them broke. There was, they are fastened, and they rode in and broke and settled, and it's.
They're moving that much, they're, they break those, they've been on that bigger tile.
Big concrete tile is in, is in good shape, but it's just separating, instead of, you know, resetting one, you have to reset four, and it goes back to a good one.
So if you need.
If you were to take the whole for answers, we have, I have a, well, I guess, you want salt cake, buddy that's conscious, go over to conscious. Sandy, I thought, if I'm going, we'll go. But it was a good trip.
It's in Leavertown, it was a good, it was a good, it's interesting to go see those things and learn more about it, and you could, you could see it even just from the first bit, you could see, you could see, there's a gap like that much in that room. I mean, it was, it was crazy, and then he said if you went farther in, their gap's harder.
And they really were.
I think what happened is, it was probably like here, and then as it went down, you're, you know, you're going down, and then it just.
Just opened them up.
It just opened them up more as you're going down. So if you build that back up, hopefully getting the rocks underneath there, it'll be the normal, the normal.
And, yeah, he has to put new straps.
New straps, he can use a strap each one, he can use a strap, he can use a hammer and a concrete.
Yep, and make sure that, yeah, when they got exposed.
Right. Then he could have put that black heavy charcoal there too, or, oh, it's charcoal, there's, you know, that natural fabric, and then put the dirt and rock, keep it from eroding away.
It?
Yes, that is it.
As soon as you have the ADE group claim, and I got a new email over the weekend, I responded back to from Long Term Recovery, which I'm a member of, and my emails be approved to annual budget and the minutes to the last meeting, that we usually have them on the phone and all that, that's usually law through. That's all I had.
Good work. Same thing we just discussed, on Wednesday, Sandy and I went and looked at that whole quarter repair project. I did neglect to mention, on Wednesday the twenty-fourth was that EMA meeting, and not well, that's in my book, so that was, it's not my intention, but that was on Wednesday the twenty-fourth, EMA board meeting that I attended. So that's what I had. Well, can you move forward with our tax assignment?
It's not great, Russell here, he's interested in getting an assignment of a county health tax certificate under one-one-seven from two thousand nineteen, the parcel in four. Do you want to explain what your intentions are with the parcel?
There's a house in four that I'm planning to fix up, and I've identified a buyer for it, and there are two parcels, a tax buyer from, I don't know, Metzger or somewhere.
Yeah, I'm worried, I mean, the private investor on one parcel.
And I'd like to buy your portion, and then negotiate with him so that we can get moving on the parcel.
So the taxes that I've been with him about, with, to bring it to date with everything, and we put all, it's one forty-one, seventy-one, left out to mention is a ten-dollar assignment fee and a twenty-dollar certificate fee on top of that, so he's agreed to cost to get the, have county assign it, agreed to assignment of the certificate into his name.
Three angels.
Well, yeah, whatever, he can, he can take it. We just need your approval to do that.
Looks like the house has been vacant about four years, and it's pretty grown up, so we'd like to get it fixed up and cleaned up, so that's part of this process.
So you're going to use it like for rental, or do we?
No, I've identified a lady that works it, in case I would like to buy it, but the USDA won't put a loan on it unless you fix it all up and clean it up.
That's it.
No issue on that complex side of doing this?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward.
I make a motion to lay through the assignment of tax sales certificate one-one-seven slash twenty nineteen.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Janice, will you get any real description on it?
Yes, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Approved.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great.
Okay, so we got that done, that done, that done. Is there anything else? I guess I got one thing, and I don't know if everybody else got this or not, so I thought I'd just bring it up. That goes back to drainage issue with the railroad in the joint district of Webster three dash. 3-9. And that was a teleconference that was only between the engineer, attorney, and Union Pacific Regional Manager. They discussed the situation. They did make it clear that they believe the damage was caused by the Union Pacific Railroad, and as such, they should pay for all the work related to repair. The conclusion of the discussion was that the Union Pacific Railroad would discuss internally to determine their preference for a repair and if they agree on payment. They will have a response by the week of July 13th. Ongoing response. Yes. So ongoing discussion with that grainage concern. Make sure everybody knew that. So hopefully maybe Webster, Humboldt County, you'll hear something next week.
I thought I had the pictures of the hole with a blacktop over by the boat, but I don't really, we haven't got a report on that.
So Friday night about 6 o'clock, Kevin Bus, who was the weekend foreman, because Tom was off for the 4th of July call, and he had reported that there was a hole in the road outside of the basketball, similar to the one that we tackled last weekend south of Hardy. He said that he had talked to LEC. They were out there. He was going to close the road for the night, being that it was after 6:00. I told him to go ahead and close the road, and we would plan on meeting at the boat shop at 8:00 in the morning on the 4th of July. He got two guys from the boat shop and Ken Rossing from the Hardy shop, because the link belt was over in Hardy. So the five of us dug in, tore the asphalt out, dug up the roadway on C-18 between Delaware and Elm. We found an 8-inch tile that had been crushed and had sucked material over the past however many years, to the point where only the asphalt was holding it up and the asphalt behind the cave. So we, like I said, we dug that up. We fixed the 8-inch tile. While we were there, we reset the 42-inch crosspipe and tied and fabricated all of the joints, and then backfilled with rock. I've got, Blacktop Service is supposed to be within two miles of there doing some patching sometime this week. We're just going to have them patch that at the same time. Since we started backfilling with just rock, we haven't had settling issues like we've had with some of our older rock culvers. But we're actually doing something similar today west of Renwick, about half mile west of Louisiana on the Blacktop. That one got reported last night about 6:00 o'clock, so.
Another hole?
Yeah. So these things, if they come in three, that's three. It can be done.
Okay. We don't need a mild epidemic of that.
Yeah, yeah. So this one west of Renwick is just a crosspipe that the joints have separated over time, and there's multiple depressions in the roadway.
But it's not a weekend, that's a plus.
Yeah, well, yeah, that one, that one got reported last night about 6:00 o'clock. So we went out and just put a load of rock in the hole to fill it temporarily and barricaded up in case there was a motorcycle or something.
Yeah.
That could bite. A car would travel over it, no problem, but, you know, a little bit of loose gravel in the middle of the road for a motorcycle.
Yeah.
But that's what we're working on right now.
And hopefully that's the last one.
I hope so.
So the disings are older, they change, and I think they're.
I think it's just the extended heat wave that's kind of been going through, you know, upper 90s, mid 90s for as long as it has been. And nothing for material underneath it. It's just softened up the asphalt.
And I kind of wonder, you know, we've had so many wet years, any kind of tile problems show up.
Yeah.
They're activated.
Because there's so much water been going through these tiles lately, and if there's a crack, they start sucking dirt and.
Yeah. Like I said, knock on wood, we're done. But I think we'll probably see a few more of these throughout the year.
Well, the other thing, I just remind people that if you see something like that, call. Because we would have a mess if a motorcycle hit something like that. I mean, that hole you showed us this week, I would hate to think of it now with a motorcycle.
That's just bad in the car.
There's more eyes out than just county people at work. Everybody, if you notice, call.
Call the policeman.
Police.
Call one of the county guys, you know.
Anybody.
Somebody.
Get ahold of somebody.
Yeah.
Especially if you're a third teamer, that would be awesome. We appreciate anybody's help, so.
Well, I got Friday night, Larry was headed home, and we did, and called it in, which I know about it.
Okay. I didn't know if it was Chad Struthers, but he called it in, or who it was, but.
I think it was Larry that waved off.
Larry Jensen?
Jensen.
Jensen went up there and helped close the road on Friday.
Yeah. I think he seen it, and he called, and he had somebody. Because I had it taken care of for you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Wait.
Wait, no.
Waiting for, quite a wait. Yeah. Last week, we discussed the Nyhark contract, the actuary services that they provide for the gas speed 75. I talked to Tim McHarton at Anderson Company and asked him about that extra 2016 that was an interim gas speed report. And he said, well, now they do these. I said, they used to do them every three years. And he said, now it's required every year. So if we sign, and we have already signed the contract, but the 2,600 will be the fee for this year, and you get a little bit of a discount, so next year it's only 2,016. So he thought that was a really good deal. He said, you should probably go ahead and.
So we used to pay the 2,000 roughly some dollars every three years. Now we have to pay it every year?
Yes.
That's a pretty good deal they struck with somebody.
Well, government's saying you got to do that.
I know. We have funds from government.
Yep.
And is that signed? Is that?
Yeah, it's all signed. I just thought I'd clarify those numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
More OBA litigation stuff if you're interested, and that's all I have.
Anything else past that? No more.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?